Thank you for your time, especially to Kim Bowman and Tim Wilson. To be frank, I'm here to end fluoridation in Montgomery County. So let's dive right in. On the matter, Leo Spiro, physician and biochemist, stated there has been a gross distortion of truth, and I'm here to present that truth that I uncovered in my seniors' honors research classes. I will add, it is not the council's fault for not knowing or knowing very little about this subject. As I reveal, it's been systematically hidden from us all for almost 80 years now. Next slide, please. So firstly, fluoridation is a violation of our constitutional rights. That's the first in 14.
Yeah, that's what you're hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're hearing the amendment 14.
Okay, yeah, thank you. So that's the first in 14, protecting individuals from medication against their own will, which fluoridation is. There are no similarities between chlorination and fluoridation. It is a violation of personal liberties, as well as one cannot opt out due to concerns. As we will see, this program actually targets the most vulnerable of our population, the malnourished, pregnant women, children, and people with chronic illnesses like kidney disease. So fluoride has never been proven to be essential for human health by government agencies like the FDA, Public Health Service, or the National Research Council. And these are just some of their quotes. Okay, so what is fluoride? Oh, God, I'm sorry. So while fluorine is an element consisting of two fluorine atoms bound together, it is a pale yellow, highly toxic reactive gas. Its diatomic form makes it the most electronegative and reactive of all elements, as it has to snatch electrons to relieve its core tension. It can form compounds with almost all other elements, releasing significant amounts of energy. It's usually found in nature bound with other elements. These are fluorides. Fluorides are the negatively charged ion of fluorine. It forms when fluorine gains an electron, resulting in the formula F-. Now armed with the captured electron, the tiny fluoride ions can get close to big molecules like proteins or DNA, forming powerful bonds with hydrogen and disrupting the normal function of the very fabric of life. So what do you think of when you think of fluoride? You probably think water, children smiling with pearly white teeth, right? Well, that's not the full picture. This is the full picture of fluoride. Fluoride lies at the core of some of the world's greatest fortunes, like that of the melons, DuPonts, and Carnegie's. Industrially, it is used to produce explosives, rubbers, solvents, uranium hexafluoride gas, refrigerants, tethalon, other plastics, pesticides, propellants for missiles, a flux in the smelting of metals like aluminum and steel, and it was a popular rodent killer in the 1900s. It also produced the CFCs that ate the hole in the ozone land in the 80s, and so much more. These processes also create what we know as forever chemicals, like PFOA. Now you know what the F stands for. With all that being said, it is extremely vital we end this practice in this area, as our proximity to an arsenal that produces and open burns many of these fluorinated materials is putting much of the population at risk. So very likely, the first disease known to man, dental and skeletal fluorosis, caused by the fluorine gases released from volcanic eruptions, have played mankind for centuries. Dental fluorosis is tooth decay, and skeletal fluorosis is the malformation and deterioration of bones. This condition was known under various names around the world, but is now known as dental fluorosis of model teeth. It would take nearly 2,000 years to discover this abnormality was due to the intolerance of fluoride in our food, water, and air. So for time's sake, we'll just glance at some of the early research. Since the 1700s, the following scientists will report studies and findings showing animals exposed to highly fluorinated air, water, and food were displaying changes. Changes like dental and skeletal fluorosis, lifeless roast, rough coats, emaciation, weakness, and eventual death from an occurring disease. It wouldn't be until the 1930s that these changes would be recorded in humans. So McKay and Black would be the one to dub this condition, these dental changes, model teeth. Due to the findings over the last century, international scientific communities actually began discussing the removal of naturally occurring fluorine or abandoning these water sources altogether. In 1931, Margaret C. Smith and her husband H. B. Smith, both biochemists from the University of Arizona, would document fluoride contamination in water near an ALCOA plant, linking it to model teeth of children in the area. 1937, Casper Hom, who is still considered the foremost expert, completes his authoritative work, The Fluoride Intoxication. His official recommendation when it came to these compounds was the cessation of therapeutic use of fluorine compounds, especially for children. So you're probably wondering, how could this have ended up in our water? The answer? Andrew Mellon. He was the Secretary of Treasury for the US in 1932, who was also the president of ALCOA and the biggest producer of aluminum and Gulf oil at the time. As fluoride was spilling, as fluoride pollution was spilling from his plants was now becoming evident in children's smiles across the nation, he began installing industrial plants and authoritative positions in government regulatory agencies to take away the attention from dental fluorosis and put it onto cavities. Mellon would get help in this massive cover-up from DuPont and the highest branches of military, as it was found in the 1930s that fluoride was the only thing to refine uranium and plutonium needed for the atomic bomb. This made all fluoride research top secret. If the public knew how toxic these compounds were then, it would have halted the entire Manhattan Project. Through Declassified Materials, award-winning investigative journalist Christopher Bryson and his fluoride deception shows that the first lawsuits against the bomb program were not over radiation, they were actually over fluoride damage. So duping the American public was no easy feat. It required a network of individuals all secretly working together, and that is clearly evident in the astounding amount of conflicts of interest in the follows of fluoridation, including names like Edward Bernays, the father of advertisement, whose greatest achievement was getting more women to smoke. He would give fluoride its public image makeover. Before he died, he told Bryson that selling fluoride to Americans was child's play. And we have Gerald Cox, a Mellon Institute researcher, who made the proposal to add fluoride to the drinking water. Oscar Hewing, the ex-ALCOA lawyer turned public health service, who would be the one to give fluoridation the green light in 1950. Leslie Groves and Harold Hodge, top Manhattan Project officials who personally supervised the human plutonium experiments. And my favorite, Robert Kehoe, who is responsible for poisoning 68 million children, and he was the mastermind behind leaded gasoline and the threshold of toxicity argument that is still used to justify the fluoridation program today. So Manhattan Project scientists would be at the core of the American fluoridation experiment. Known as Program F in Declassified Materials, these scientists secretly gathered and analyzed the blood and tissue samples of Nuremberg children to find a safe level of exposure for atomic industrial workers to avoid lawsuits. So the experiment would be cut in half, the control city fluorided, and the practice of fluoridation began essentially overnight, thanks again to Oscar Hewing. So fluoride is actually responsible for more environmental damage than all 20 other pollutants combined. This is due to its carcinogenic effects, or simply fluoride boosts the toxicity and potency of other pollutants. Fluoride caused the worst environmental disaster in US history in Denora, Pennsylvania in 1948. This event spurred the creation of the Clean Air Act in 1955. It left 20 dead and thousands with chronic diseases. This is one of many disasters. So this slide kind of compiles the decades of research showing the symptoms of fluoride poisoning. We'll just focus on chronic for a time's sake, as it's what we are exposed to in our drinking water. So we have teeth and bone changes, cancer, heart, lung, kidney disease, IQ drops, universal weakness, gastrointestinal symptoms, spontaneous fractures, arthritis, ADHD, or couch potato syndrome, and advanced aging, just to name a few. So we'll go over quickly, the most avid anti-fluoridationist. So we have George Walbotz, a physician allergist whose research on penicillin and smokers' respiratory syndrome helped to educate generations of physicians. He became a leading activist against fluoridation after his double-blind studies displayed thyroid disruptions, eye problems, heart disease, and eczema. We have Phyllis Munix, former head of toxicology department at Forth's Danner Research in Boston. She was one of the nation's leading biochemists with a specialization in neurotoxicology. Munix developed the first rapid computer recognition system that revealed as little as 0.2 parts per million could cause ADHD, or what she called couch potato syndrome. She was blacklisted from industry, but that did not stop her from becoming an activist. We have Floyd Deeds, the senior pharmacologist at the US Department of Agriculture, who was setting a spray residue for fluoride in pesticide applications. In 1933, he conducted the first ever chronic fluoride poisoning review. The results showed a strong link between dental fluorosis and thyroid disruption. We have Dr. Yi Maoyanis, biochemist and editor of Chemical Abstracts, whose research showed immune system disruption and that fluoride actually caused the original or primary lesion of cancer. So Dean Burke, he was the head, a former chemist at National Cancer Institute. He conducted a study in the 70s showing that fluoridation actually was causing a rise in cancer across the US. Working with Dr. Yi Maoyanis, they brought these concerns before Congress, who mandated the National Toxicology Program to study fluoride's toxicity. What they found was an increased incidence of rare liver cancer and bone tumors. There was never any follow-up. Now, as you can see, Dean Burke states, "In fact, fluoride causes more human cancer death, and it causes it faster than any other chemical." Even from an engineer's point of view, fluoride is a nightmare with the prevalence of corrosive damage to equipment, no flow control, toxic combinations, lead leaching, dropout, overfeeding, and wild variations of fluoride levels in just one area. So studies have revealed fluoridation is actually not as cost-effective as initially promoted. The authority here pays upwards of $20,000 for the toxic bywaste of the aluminum and super phosphate fertilizer industries. Hundreds of thousands of dollars are spent on repumps of pairs, etched windows, main and storage tank replacements, as well as the cost for a health environment and children's future. So just to remind you, the plans for ending fluoridation are already contained in our VA code that comes with manuals and assistance for water engineers. And just a reminder, the EPA sets the MCLs on fluoride, but there is no required minimum level, as is not mandated due to the lack of evidence of this chemical's actual benefits. Oh, okay, sorry. And so please join the over 200 communities across the nation that have ended fluoridation and brought about the greatest public health achievement of the 21st century. Thank you so much for your time.
Any questions?
Yeah, any questions, yeah.
I'm glad. It's so nice to have a presentation like that. It's obviously a lot of information.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
A couple of things that I wanted to mention. The water is actually provided by the county. We are part of the county's water facility, but obviously, we provide infrastructure and we do bill the citizens, because that's actually, yeah, through our building department and stuff, it's a service that is provided to the citizens. And obviously, I was caught up, like, just thinking about, like, the amendment, the first and the 14th amendment. And I do think that I, you know, it is a voluntary service that you can receive, obviously.
Are you speaking about fluoridation?
For, no, for water.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, okay.
And then, we choose to get it because it's obviously a necessity. And then also, I do know that there is obviously positive things about having maybe fluorine in the water. And I do think that there is, and probably there is no documentation about this, but I can tell you something, the hair loss is obviously something that it's pretty much visible in most Americans and even people that move here to the United States, like myself and everything else, like, yeah, the hair losing or whatever.
Oh, yes.
The fluorine and stuff.
Yeah, it is very cruel.
And one of the positive things that I have seen about the fluorine in the water is that it gets rid of H-palori in our systems. What it does, it cleans our guts, pretty much. And that's why our systems don't have the ability to procreate worms or tapeworms or all kinds of intestine parasites that we, in other countries, develop over time because of the water not being clean and obviously, there is a lot of things. And I'm just telling you from personal life, what takes place, and I have been, because I had to deal with that with my family when we go out to South America, where the water is not, it doesn't have any, you know, like, any chemicals or nothing to get rid of the parasites and stuff like that. So in that fact, I kind of think is very good. But then, at the same time, like you were saying, there is probably a lot of stuff in the water that we really don't have a clue about. But my questions are to you, what do you think will be the solution, and what is your recommendation? Obviously, like, probably drinking water from bottles and stuff and taking a shower with the other one, but I don't know. What are your recommendations after your studies?
So my recommendations, I mean, first and foremost, would be just to end fluoridation in this area. That would probably be the best. Other than that, reverse osmosis and getting water filters, keeping up your nutrients. I know that calcium does help to move the fluoride fat, like, quicker through your system, so it doesn't, what, you get a problem with chronic diseases is the bioaccumulation of fluoride in your system. So if you keep the nutrients up, like your phosphorus, your magnesium, your calcium, that helps to bypass and excrete, so it doesn't cause further damage. But as far as cleaning the water as well, fluoride is the only thing that we put into our water, meant to treat the population, not the water. There's no similarities between chlorination and fluoridation. And yeah, so that's why I would really, and then also, it actually, you know, back in the day when they were putting this in our water, we didn't have the dental institutes, you know, the dental, sorry, my brain, I've been talking for so much. We don't have the dental institutions that we have today. So people can go and get dental care. We have very good dental care, and I love the opulent dental here. But, yes.
So as you know, our water is supplied to a regional water authority, and they're run by a board of directors. So I believe, Randy, it would take that board of directors to look into that any further?
Correct.
Okay.
And I will say, I have been to the water authority many a times. They turned down seeing my presentation, but I gave them a verbal one, and the only thing that they responded to that with was that the EPA sets the standards, and they followed that. So they had no other follow-up to my presentation, so.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, just one.
When you talked about getting rid of it completely, I didn't, I think you gave us a solution for us, if that's what my understanding is, for us to take calcium and stuff, right?
Oh, okay, yeah, I'm sorry, I was a little.
Or is that to put it in the water?
Oh, no, no, okay.
I was confused about that part.
Okay, yeah, I'm a little, I'm a little confused. Yeah, just my official recommendation when it comes to fluoridation, like I said, you come to problems with overfeeding, you come to problems with it eating away at the storage tanks and at the pipes, causing main breaks and stuff. So I think just overall, cost-effective for our health and for, you know, the water infrastructure of the area, that it is, would be better to just end fluoridation.
So in the event that you do not end fluoride, you're saying ingestion of calcium and other vitamins?
Yes, well, yeah.
Speed up the flow through?
Excretion, yeah, excretion of those, of like, those chemicals.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you guys so much.
Do you have a question?
No, sir.
Thank you guys for your time.
All right. Next is the citizens' comments section. They asked if you have constructive criticisms or questions with the way the town operates. If you would come to the podium, give your name and address, address your comments to me as the chair, and limit your term to three minutes. Is there anyone here that would like to address council?
Yes, I'm Joyce Rafterd. I live at 510 Ellot Road, Christiansburg. I was at the last town council meeting on July the 9th, 2024, and I witnessed something that I've never seen before at a town council meeting. I listened to an employee of the town, the Small Business Solution manager, complain about two council members' timeline and accuse them of unprofessional behavior and disguised it as a business report. Here's a copy of the Town of Christiansburg organization's structure, right here. And it says, "Councilwoman Hicks and Councilwoman Bowman, and the rest of the council, along with the mayor, are at the top of the list as a legislative body that establishes general policies for the town. The Small Business Solution manager would be under the guidance of the town council. Councilmember Hicks and Bowman are the central business committee with reasonable expectations to discuss among themselves. I conclude the issue was a personal matter that should have been handled privately by the town manager and the mayor and all of the town council members." The mayor went on to say, quote, "The facade program was a thorn in their side, so we should just pull it away from central business and give it to the town staff to administer," unquote. Was this his intention all along? We elect town council members, not town staff members, to make decisions regarding the spending of our tax dollars. It was then reported in the Roanoke Times, and definitely not newsworthy, but a shameful hit piece from two council members, and the mayor would investigate the matter. But what needs to be investigated is how this was allowed to continue on the floor by the town manager, the mayor, and council members without objection. Therefore, a public apology is owed to Councilwoman Hicks and Councilwoman Bowman. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Joanne Price, Blacksburg, Virginia. I have spoken on two occasions, along with other concerned citizens, on the topic of town council meetings, in other town council meetings. I am speaking in light of the recent Supreme Court ruling on Chevron versus Natural Resources, defense counsel, in which the Supreme Court strikes down Chevron, curtailing power of federal agencies. It is a major ruling, the Supreme Court on June 28th cut back sharply on the power of federal agencies to interpret the laws they administer, and ruled that courts should rely on their own interpretation of ambiguous laws. The decision will likely have far-reaching effects across the country, from environmental regulation to healthcare costs. But for the decision or authority to be transferred from the town council, the legislative body to town manager or any other unelected public servant, it's contrary to the will of the people and also contrary to this ruling, especially those who are most affected and contrary to the spirit of freedom in the town. I urge council to take into heart Mr. Woody's written comments, in which he, as a member and contributor to this community, expressed serious concern. And I understand that Mr. Woody has also met with Councilwoman Hockett and Councilwoman Bishop, and given a specific example where there was a problem with the parking, the parking lot area, where people cannot make a left turn. Council, town made that, Town of Christiansburg administrative staff made that decision without going to, going before the town council. This could have been avoided because there could have been a hearing and other individuals involved, who were definitely affected by this, as well as everybody else having to go into a private parking lot to turn around and come back up to make a, to make your left turn. So these are the kinds of decisions that need to be left with the town council. To make this decision instead of one unelected person, which hinges our destiny on the well-being and inheritance, even prosperity in some cases, on a neighbor who may not be impartial or have the expertise to make such a decision. Further, it skirts the benefit of public hearings, cutting down citizens completely out of the process. In the broader view, and most important of all, is these decisions directly affects the broader public and town citizens. Citizens do not necessarily subscribe to newspapers or other mediums. However, they are well aware of the town meeting opportunity to speak their hearts and voice concerns. So please do not deprive our citizens of this right. It is the consensus of property owners and realtors that I have canvassed, and also Mr. Woody has canvassed, that this right should be reigned with you, our duly-elected representatives. Authority should not be subjugated to a process or timelines. Thank you.
I'd like to say, I did not meet with Mr. Woody.
You did not? It was Councilwoman Hockett, yes.
And also, met with Mr. Woody by phone.
You did?
I did.
Yes.
Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Charles Robbins. I live at 410 Pin Oak Drive. I just have one slight concern that's kind of been getting worse since COVID happened and went. Back in 2021, the state government held back a lot of general traffic laws, such as turning signals or a broken taillight, whatever, just stupid stuff that wouldn't affect most people unless an officer saw it. Most people put that kind of fiction stuff just out of the way, but it's gotten worse over the years, which is literally just three years. People are speeding in town, they're parking wherever they want to. They are literally aiming for me as an e-scooter rider, and I'm in the middle of the night, 2:00 AM is about the only time I use my e-scooter, which I've had to call 911 several times at the point, I just don't do it anymore. And it's getting concerning, because it's happening within the town limits. I don't really see it anywhere else in the state of Virginia, just here. But I'm sure it happens everywhere, because I can't be everywhere. But in Roanoke, it tends to be less of a problem, because most people are just pedestrians, and traffic is a lot slower than it can be here, so just more people, more cars. I'm kind of curious, is this, I know most legislative bodies at the local level have legislative priorities that they take to the state level. If that's the case with this council, I'd very much like to see traffic laws come back. Like, a car can be on the road with every light but one and still not be allowed to be pulled over. This was told to me by the police chief. I had a meeting with him maybe two, three months ago, and this is all we discussed for almost an hour, how bad traffic laws have been pushed back, and it's creating serious issues, especially where I live now in the Oak Tree area. Kids are speeding at almost 30 to 40 miles an hour. I know this because my e-scooter only does 23 max when going downhill. Cars fly past me without even seeing me, even in a reflective shirt like this. I wear this shirt all the time when I'm riding my e-scooter. They almost hit me every time. Also got a reflective backpack that I use. They still try not, they just don't look. They're kids. Most of them are college students now that live in Oak Tree. It's not adults, it's not middle-class citizens, it's all renters now, for the most part, that are coming and going from Virginia Tech. A lot of them are grad students, which is fine, but they're just not as mature as they should be. So it'd be nice to have those traffic laws back into place, so the town officers can enforce them. We have traffic cops, parking cops, we've got every kind of police officer you can think of, but we can't use them, because every law that's being broken is no longer a breakable law, it's legal. And I'm just kind of curious if that's possible to make it a legislative priority for the next legislative session of 2025.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a comment about this. Do you know my comment?
Yes, excuse me. Joanne would like to comment.
I was trying to find out, at what time do you think these events are taking place? Because I know that the police are still giving speeding tickets, and they are enforcing the parking, I mean, we have a parking enforcer. And then, I do see them pulling people up. I mean, maybe they cannot catch everybody, but I do see them working around the town doing this.
Yes, but not at night, and that's the problem. Most of these traffic violations are at night, usually between 10:00 PM and 4:00 AM. There are cops out, but they just aren't enforcing the law like you show. A lot of them are sitting in very specific spots trying to catch just the speeders. So if you're sitting in one spot, you can't be driving around looking accidentally for many of the pedestrians are out. Bars tend to close between 12:00 AM and 2:00 AM, especially on the weekends, which has a lot of pedestrians and idiots out speeding. A lot of them are street racing at this time, and that's, it's just an issue. Street racing hasn't been an issue here for at least seven years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Waltz, 1370 Rigby Street. I was going to say something about, you know, the little rant that went on last town council meeting by a staff member, but, you know, I finally got the document, but don't really have, three minutes isn't enough time to go in and point out all the inaccuracies in it. But, you know, what stood out to me was the fact that three of you are ex-military, and that type of insubordination would never have been accepted.
That is a personnel issue that the town's dealing with, and is dealing with. It is a personnel issue involving that staff member.
Okay, Mayor, well, a personnel issue would also be your investigation of two town council members and their committee.
I disagree with you because.
Because they are personnel of the town as well. Do they not receive a paycheck?
They are not, they are not.
You would disagree, but I'd say that the law probably would.
I'm sure that you and I are going to disagree on everything, and you're always right, so there we go.
And you're a de facto, and it's still my three minutes, you're a de facto member of every committee, so you meeting with any one of them individually, privately, would be an illegal meeting, if you're discussing any type of committee business, because that would be a quorum of the committee. But again, you know, that you, and you don't have to discuss it, I'm not asking you to discuss it. I'm asking you to give me my three minutes and be quiet. Insubordination is unacceptable.
Mr. Waltz, you can leave at any point in time. If you're going to sit here and address me in a disrespectful manner, I'm going to do the same to you.
You mean how you usually do?
Major Althausser, would you like to escort Mr. Waltz out of the building?
Well, that's fine. I still have free speech, and you may want to check agree before you make that mistake, there, Mayor. I don't have to be respectful. I'm one of your members.
And you're not, don't worry. You're very good at that. Anyone else to address council? If there are none, I will close the citizens' comments. We have committee reports and the street committee.
Yes, sir. Okay, so the street committee has several things to share with council this evening. Three of them are reapprovals of items you've already seen, but in the length of the process, they were delayed in completion. So the first one is an easement that you'll see on tax parcel 520-A72 and 520-A65. I'm just pulling that up. And this is the dedication of an easement, a new 20-foot easement to access the waterline, and then a variable easement, I'm sorry, a relocated easement for the, to access the sewer line. And so you can see, Andrew's pointing out the sewer line easement, and then there in the middle is the water easement. You have seen. You have seen this, street committee has seen this, and everyone has approved it. Street committee, again, would like to recommend reapproval, and I'd like to make a motion that we do so.
I'd like to just add that this is in the area of the county garage. And I'll second your motion.
Thank you.
Okay. The motion in the second discussion?
Can you explain one more time what, where are you guys trying to do with that one? I'm, I'm sorry.
They're dedicating an easement for us to have access to both the water line and the sewer line.
Council approved this in December of 2023. Applicant approval time expired before they could record it, so they're coming back to us to ask us to be able to do it again.
Well, that's why I was asking, because you, you look very familiar.
Seven?
Councilman Bishop?
Aha.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, next?
Great. The next item that we have is a subdivision of two tax parcels. You will also recognize this one. Andrew pulls that up. Uh, this is two properties that I would like to adjust their lot lines so that there is a third parcel on the back end of the property. Town staff has reviewed this, meets all of our code requirements, and you have all seen this and, and approved it. And I'd like to make a motion that we approve this again.
In a second.
Councilman Bishop?
Well, any questions? Give me a second. Uh, yes, that's it.
Ah.
Sorry. Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
Those six O?
Our next item is another, and the last item for reapproval, and this is the dedication of a .005 right-of-way. So you'll see it is a very small square here at Technology Drive and Corporate Drive. The reason for that small square is to dedicate an easement so that the road can meet the requirements for, for traffic to be able to turn easily onto Corporate Drive. You've seen this, and again, street committee and council has approved this. We'd like to make a motion that we reapprove this.
In a second.
Questions?
Councilman Bishop?
Aha.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson? Last item from the street committee is we reviewed an easement that Andrew will pull up. This is a new easement, you have not seen this one before, but this is, this is an easement you'll see in the shaded area along the road. That's a new variable with permanent easement for public drainage. And then a second easement to be relocated. So there is a gray line that Andrew's highlighting there, and the request is to relocate that easement to the solid line that Andrew's pointing out. And I'd like to make a motion that we approve this.
In a second.
Questions?
Yeah, question. Will this be like an example of what we were putting on, on the next item? And all, and what was it that you are giving them on this one again?
We are getting an easement so that we can access the public drainage along the street, and so that we can access the public utilities for this property. This is an easement for us to access those items.
What was the address again?
The address to this?
Yeah.
It's the same one we just did.
Oh, it's the same one?
Yeah, it's...
Oh, it looks so different. I guess you're getting a different view from...
Yeah, it's all the same. Any other questions? Ms. Shields?
Councilman Bishop?
Aha.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
Those six O, thank you. In the discussion by mayor and council, we have an amendment to section 40-2 definitions, section 40-3 administrator of Article One in general of Chapter 40 subdivisions of the town of Christiansburg codes, divided consistency with the Virginia State Code and additional administrative and planning commission reviews.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
In a second.
The motion in a second. Any discussions?
Yes, just want to add something. I know we talked a lot about this and just want to kind of reaffirm that this doesn't change anything about public hearings. This is one small piece of an administrative process to adjust lot lines and easement accesses. And, um, and the street committee has asked that a policy be written that complements this. And that policy would include, um, the option for property owners, if they would prefer to go through the traditional process that we've had in the past, to take something to street committee, their lot line adjustments to street committee and to council for review and approval. They absolutely can request that. Uh, it won't be written into the code, so the code will still stand, but the policy will allow them to choose to take that through street committee and to have that additional review if they would prefer to. Um, so they will not lose that option, and that will remain an option for anybody who has a lot line adjustment. Additionally, we've asked for the policy to include a report out, so when street committee needs to be shared all of the approvals of the lot lines that, adjustments that have been made so that it's in street committee, and we can also report that to council as well, which I think is something we talked about in the work session.
Okay, any comments or questions?
Hi. The only comment that I have, I'm obviously going to vote no on this. I do think that, um, this takes away from a public hearing, and then it also kind of skips a step of coming to town council for another view from the citizens to be able to see things like that. So in my case, I would be voting no on this because I just, I want the most information that can be given out to the citizens the better it will be.
Their lot, their lot lines will still be part of their plans, and there are no hearings, public hearings for lot line adjustments. So it does not remove any of the public hearings that may normally come in a process or development.
But I don't understand, because under the disadvantages package that we got from Randy, he shows that there will not be public hearings, and that's one of the things. That was a disadvantage, wasn't it?
We, we don't have public hearings for subdivisions now.
I think that it just states they don't exist. We don't have them now, so that wouldn't change anything.
But they'll still skip the step of coming to town council, which means it is to me a public information for the public to see, so.
Yeah, and our policy will be that, um, once those lot line adjustments are approved, that they're reported to us and we share them with council.
I still think that we should be able to have those.
Anyone else? Hearing none, Ms. Shields?
Councilman Bishop?
Aha.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Nay.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Nay.
Councilwoman Hockett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
Those four two, we would like those changes, uh, and we'd like to review this. We're going to take a pause as we read the book. Facet grant program. We, uh...
We make a motion to, um, to go through it this year the way it was last year with, um, the changing of the time that it had to be done by, um, what was it, July the first?
June first.
June first, 2025. So there will not be extensions for that.
Second.
The motion in the second? Discussion?
Yes. Um, obviously, I do feel that I do work for the town as well, and my, um, everything regarding us as well, I'm talking just for myself too, it should have been done, um, in a different way. But all the information that has been taken care of from my side, um, is being open to the public to see. Everything that has been sent out from the central business committee and everything that has been done with the facade grant is being very open. I was very kind of shocked the last time in town council meeting that that took place because I'm one of the people that have been asking for this facade grant to be offered to all the citizens, to all the businesses in the town of Christiansburg that followed that criteria that was set in place. When before, it was for very small places. This grant has been through a process of getting a facade grant. Uh, we have a committee people, the, not just a committee, they, there's people in the, in the town that are citizen representatives that are, most of them happen to be business owners and stuff too, that can actually choose to give those facade grant amounts to those businesses that qualify. Um, and now we, I was not having no closed meetings with anybody or nothing like that. And so I just, I just think that this whole thing has been a witch hunt, and we're just sad to see this. And I'm not going to speak about the matters with, uh, with, uh, about an employee because I agree it's a personal matter, just like I should have been treated as well and not thrown under the bus with things that were lies and not true statements of the person that I am and what I'm trying to do. Everything that I do in this town council is being for the best of the people that I, in my belief, that's the work that I have been doing in place. And this is a comment that just came out to me in my mind this week too, and as I was reading it from a friend of mine too, this really touches my heart today. Don't expect to win any popularity contest when you speak the truth. Jesus spoke the truth, and he was hated for it. The world cannot hate you, but it hates me because I testify of that. Its works are evil. And so with that, I leave it at that, and we're going to continue to do the facade grant, just like we were doing it before, and that is done.
Anyone else? I will say that the, we're going back to the way it was administered last year, 2023, uh, and the entire town businesses were included. It's not just left to Main Street, but I think we put that in last year, there are ten...
It was, and what I was...
So that's what we're going to continue to do.
What I was referring to is that my work in town council, during my work in town council, I have pushed for those things, and yes. And even the discrimination pauses and all the stuff, yeah, it was last year, which I push for those things too, because I think it's important to have those things in place.
Okay.
The only thing we're augmenting is the date for, to be completed, correct?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Councilman Bishop?
Aha.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
Those six O, thank you. Staff reports?
Uh, just in regards to the fluoridation, I'll just mention that we don't require water service in town. Uh, you'd have to have water service if you have a house, but we would allow you to actually drill a well in town if you want to. And we do have, I guess, several in town. So, uh, we, we don't require you to connect to our water, and as you mentioned, we do get our water from the New Re, uh, Regional Water Authority. And we, we're, we're members of, uh, tech, Montgomery County and Blacksburg.
I, I know you're the town manager, but can you double-check on that policy? Because from, has it changed in the last several years?
No, they've been using...
Because I know that if you have a well and you have the company come out and do a cleaning, and then they said that your well, it's not fixable.
That's sewer pump-out, that's, that's not well.
Okay, and then with the well...
With, with, with your sewer, if your sewer fails or requires pump-out, we require connection to town sewer. And if you build a new house, if sewer is available, we were, we require connection to sewer.
To sewer, but...
Correct, but water, water, in town, if you wanted to drill a well, you, you can do that.
Even if there is the ability to have connection?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
And just in regards to the street vacation at the Park and Rod Lot, I believe that was Alma Street. We did have a public hearing for that, and it did come to council for council action because it was a street vacation. So, and we did send letters to the adjoining property owners. We ran ads in the paper. Uh, in regards to Huckleberry Park, we've recently noticed a couple of gates installed along our perimeter fence to the park from some of the adjoining subdivisions.
A couple of what?
Gates with the adjoining residences installed, of course, without our permission. Uh, I'm, I don't necessarily have a problem with it per se, although we do feel we want to control access to the park. So what I'm planning, just let you know how I plan on handling that, is coming with a permit form for access to basically cut a gate in our fence, provided it's maintained nicely, and that they're signing, that they understand and they agree to the park's hours, because that I think is our biggest concerns with access to the park.
So are they actually cutting our fence now?
Yes, that's happened a couple of places.
Is that not a destruction of public property?
It, it could be, yes.
Okay, very good.
No, we want to check into that differently, I guess.
Well, like I say, I mean, we, we can handle it, and, and, you know, if you don't want to provide access to the, the adjoining residences, we don't have to. But like I say, we didn't necessarily, I guess, talking to Brad Epple, we didn't necessarily see any harm in it, provided that they abide by the, the hours.
Can I ask you one more question? If there is a special drilling for water, you can make it where they are not allowed to drink, right?
We could, but we allow it. We do allow you to drill wells. You, you would need a permit, but we allow it. Also, I'll mention, uh, we are planning, through Emergency Services Committee, we had talked about emergency operations training for town council, and we are going to, I guess, recommend that you take the NIMs ICS 100, 200, 700, and 800 courses. I'll send you links to those. Take them at your leisure. We're going to give you a couple of months to, to do that. But just to let you know that that's, and we probably will still have some type of council exercises. Uh, those, they aren't really complicated per se, but they are pretty technical, so, um, just take... They are basically procedures in emergency situations. Um, things like a setting up on a, basically on a emergency response center, uh, who's in charge of situations, things like that. Who's in charge of incident command structure?
So do you need an okay?
No, I'm just letting you know that that's basically the recommendation of the committee, and that I'll be sending that to you. But like I say, just if you can, take it over the next couple of months, I think is what the committee was thinking.
And I'll discuss it a little bit more in just a minute. What, what Ms. Hockett and I were, are, have proposed, so I'll, I'll tell you more in a moment.
And I'll just mention that, uh, I guess, you, you, do you want to talk about the revenue recovery?
I'll do it.
Okay. That, that's all I've got.
Town attorney? Council reports, Mr. Bishop?
No reports.
Ms. Hicks?
I would like, um, Andrew, if you have those slides right there, that you can put out there for everybody to see, um, the advertisement that was created by Christine Ani for the facade grant. I think you look really nice, but that's just my opinion.
Is that...
That was one, that's a website banner?
Is this what will appear on the website?
On the website.
So, but we have not done any printed as of yet, is that correct?
Are we planning to do any of that right now, since we are like two blocks, uh, two weeks away from this last week, a week away from starting the program?
I guess we have in the past, we hadn't, you know, figured out that until yet, but yeah. Um, yeah, we're, we're, we're talking about that.
I've instructed the PR people to start working on, on that type of advertisement.
Correct.
And, uh, you know, the, the holdup on it was to make sure that we had the approval on the 2023 guidelines rather than others that had been proposed. So we kind of had to hold off till we knew exactly what council wanted to do. So that's what we got, and, and what central business wanted to do. So that's what they're doing. They should be working on it in the next few days. They'll probably email out to the council committee members to look at.
And if somebody wants to see it from the public, what that looks like or whatever, we should have the information, and then we can pass it along to anybody that wants to see it, so.
And it'd be linked from the website banner as well. And then the, the other slide was what you could see, uh, the, uh, on the electronic readable.
Okay, very good. Mr.... Ms. Hockett?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
Mr. Jenkins?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, so the, uh, Emergency Services Committee, we, we met, we have a couple of things we're gonna bring to council. Um, one of them is, uh, rescue recovery. We currently bill it a hundred and thirty percent. Um, in the next council meeting, we're gonna bring a, a recommendation to move that to one seventy. Uh, one seventy would bring us in line with, uh, the county and the rest of the state, moving it up to one seventy, and, uh, it's a sizable.
Fire and rescue?
Fire and rescue, yeah. So we're gonna bring that at the next meeting. Um, we also, uh, asked to add a, uh, a couple of discussion items to the next work session, fire and safety. Um, we've, we've mentioned several times about talking to, uh, the county about the, a new fire station, staffing, and all these things. So Ms. Hockett and I would like to get the whole council involved in a discussion about what it is we really wanna ask them for, so we've asked to include that topic as a work session item, so we can cover it in, uh, that forum instead of here. Um, and then the training that Randy mentioned, uh, Tanya and I, we, for two years now, we've talked about, uh, going over the emergency operation plan and, and letting all of us know what our roles and responsibilities are. The training is a, a preface for, uh, elected officials, and so it's a several-step process where we're gonna individually, on our own pace, do the different, four different levels of training. Then we're gonna have a, uh, a session where we discuss it, go over the emergency operation plan, and then what we would really like to do at some point is, is actually do either a sand table with the, uh, the, the chiefs and everyone on, on how, what really happens, and, uh, and then maybe even a, an exercise at some point in the, in the next twelve months. So it's a separate.
So you're trying to do those, um, separate?
Yeah, it'll all be separate, separate things, but, but it's a, it's a process, um, to bring us as the elected officials online on what's our roles and responsibilities in an emergency operation. Um, uh, and a lot of it says, sit in the corner and let the chiefs do their job.
I do like the, um.
But we wanna, we wanna engage council so that we all understand our roles, um, and, and the roles of our, our different leaders in the, the town.
I think the, the one meeting with the, about, talking about the, um, with the county members and everything, I do think that should just do that one item alone.
We, it's, it's on the August, we put it, we asked you to put it on the August.
It's August twenty-first, and actually, we were gonna put it on there with tourism, and we were gonna take off the Main Street program.
Yeah. So we're gonna talk, we'll talk briefly tourism, and then that fire and safety, August seventeenth is what we've, we've asked, as long as everybody else is not in disagreement to that.
The, the next scheduled work session is August, September first?
Correct.
I would like, uh, facade grant sometime, uh, in the next couple of months.